Well, as promised, when we last met, we were doing a budget workshop and then when we had a budget update at the last July meeting, we said that we would produce the document to you electronically by Thursday, and I think we did hit that mark. It was about six o'clock Thursday night. And essentially, just to kind of give you a, you want me to just kind of give you a briefing of the changes?
Yeah.
I tried to outline that in the email. The main changes to the entire budget so far as we see it today has just been on the FEFP. The DOE released the FEFP second calculation to us last week. We got it about, I think it was Tuesday morning, maybe late Monday night, early Tuesday morning. So we turned the document around and put it in and sent it out to everyone Thursday evening, like we said. So hopefully everyone got it. I didn't get any feedback, so I was kind of worried whether you got it or not, so I checked with Tammy to make sure she received it, so it was all good, so I'll make sure it was So I did write a little introductory memo that kind of outlined everything and kind of gave you some information as to where we're at. And as I've been saying the last few meetings, the property value has essentially become stable, it's leveled off, we know what it's going to be. And for this year, it's about 8.5 billion as opposed to in the first calculation where the conference report was like 8.9 billion. So that stuff, the property value did come down. Overall, we're looking at, the property value has dropped approximately 3.8 billion or about 31% since the high days of '07-'08. So it's a very drastic drop. Yes?
No, I'm sorry. So '07-'08 was our high watermark.
Yes.
And so with every single day, when I wake up in the morning and I hear Rick Scott's ad say he has increased education spending and Charlie Crisp decreased it, that's the absolute total line because the-
We're playing on words.
That the base student allocation in '07-'08 is higher than it is even today.
Oh yeah, sure.
It's just a number of students. Can't say it because we have, you forgot that part, we have more students.
Right.
We pay less for each one. But that's, you know, I don't know that the public really understands that when we look at the budget statewide even, you have to look at the per student, not the overall total spending because if the student enrollment goes up, obviously, it's going to cost more money. But nobody says that sentence.
Well, what happens is too, let me say this real quick, when they go through and they do the second calculation is that when they don't have enough funds that was appropriated to meet them, they do appropriation. And we lost, I think, $27,000 or $28,000, just us, not, I mean, it was more statewide, but-
And this year's, our education budget's based on 90,000 more students.
Right.
They forget to tell that part.
Which is surprising because we've lost so many. Where are they moving to now?
There's a lot of students that some of the people want to see.
So, as I've been saying the last few meetings, the biggest interest to me is the planning enrollment. Where are the students going? Because we're down essentially about 14,425 this year. And we, since the '06-'07 years, down approximately 9%. So those are, that to me is the more alarming thing. Now that we've gotten through the Duke and the property value, I think that's stabilizing. I think funding is starting to come back around, the economy's starting to turn back around. Now we've got to worry about where are the students? Where are they going?
Go back up to this first, when you say that we've lost $11 million and 5%. What is that?
Total budget.
All right, tell me relative to what? To last year's funding?
Correct.
Is that based on the decrease in student population?
Yes.
Okay, all of it?
Not all of it. Remember, that includes capital, so we've spent a lot of our capital as well. So that's the entire budget in total.
The other thing too, though, is when we look at the BSA and we're looking at that base student allocation, even with, as Mr. Deitchman's talking about, the difference in funding, we also aren't considering that we've had a significant increase in the cost of educating a public school student with the mandates that we've had.
Exactly.
And we've had to continue to add that, so not only has it been a reduction in funding, but an increase in that cost. That's, that we cannot, and I know that there's people that don't remember this, we do not set that mileage rate to determine that. So when they tell us we have to do this-
Prime example, the blended learning we've had to fund.
Right.
The remedial math and reading we've had to fund, virtual school, dual enrollment, all those things. We didn't get extra money for that. That's just embedded now that we are required to do, and we had to figure out ways to do it within the coffers that we're receiving. So, and we do it. And as, you know, Mr. Simon just showed you, we are doing it in a way that we're still an A and high performing school district. So I mean, everyone comes together and makes sure we use the resources that we have available.
But even the tracking, the data work that has to be done, that isn't just from research accountability, but goes right down into the classroom, that the work that they have to do to monitor that and move that forward. There's no additional funds that come with that, and there's an additional workload that continues on that. And so I, it to me is again in both directions, reducing the funding, the loss of the students as well as the increased cost.
The FEFP funding, we'll go in more detail, but essentially, the state is funding about 52% and local dollars are funding about 48%. That's what it amounts to this year. It did change from the final conference report, the first calculation, I'll show that to you in detail.
Was that this year as in the past year or the coming year?
The current FY15 year.
Okay.
So the statistics, and I realize this may be a little bit small on what we've been collecting in taxes, we could probably go to the next one, it'll be a little easier. And I'm trying to see if I can rotate this. Yeah, I'm just trying to get there. So you can see the property value, or the, yeah, the property value, how it has steadily gone down, but we're seeing maybe its region is peak as far as the decrease in value. Speaking to the property praiser, this should be the last year you see that, we start, should start seeing an uptick, but you know, go back to that '07-'08 year, that is the big year. Remember, that reflects '06-'07 really when it comes through, so. But those really didn't change much. Your overall tax budget changed a little bit. It went down from what we were looking at collecting for this year. We still are doing well in collecting our taxes as we always do. We have a phenomenal county about paying their taxes and we receive, I mean, much better than a lot of other districts. Same thing here.
Go back please.
Yes ma'am.
Please.
That's our taxes collected for the required local effort discretionary total and then the capital out.
All right, thank you. You just couldn't buy that, I was trying to read.
Are you, do you have something, are you okay?
I'm fine. I have a broken phone.
So the FEFP funding, we did go through and add the definitions. I know a lot of times that is very helpful. Give everybody information about what those funding line items mean and their definitions and what they can fund. Our weighting, these are the cost program factors. This is how the weighting is generated, from the unweighted to the weighted, based on what program they are, K through three, four through eight, nine through 12, and the ESE levels and everything. And the, how the formula actually works from the state and how they fund it. So the next thing should be our, I'll try to make this a little bit bigger. So as you see, the second calculation to the final conference report, the change in the property value. And then you go down to the mileage rate. Remember, this is set through the Department of Revenue and DOE and then, you know, initially set by the legislature in the final calculation of the budget. But you can see our required local effort from the final conference report to the second calculation actually went down from 5.114 to 5.017. And then the discretionary mileage rate is always the same, 0.748, they always love it at the top. So our total mileage rate for the FEFP is 5.765. Now what you'll see tonight when you do the approval of the tentative budget, there will be a slight prior period adjustment that is added in there that is 0.039. And that's to adjust for previous years, like when you go to the value adjustment board and the taxable value goes down from what they previously had budgeted, they make an adjustment in the following year, and that's what that is, so it'll be 0.039. What's interesting is, is no changes to the FEFP from the final conference report other than this sparsity supplement. It went up about 400,000, so. And then you'll see where the state funding actually increased by 3 million, where the local funding went down about 3 million. So, and if you look at the entire, you know, you got $100 million worth of FEFP funding, which is just a slight increase from where we were at in the fourth calculation of last year. But as we always tell people, we show people, the majority of all that funding is earmarked, you know, for where it's going. We don't have much say in what we do. And if you look at our entire general fund budget, about 92% of it is generated from the FEFP. So 92% of it is pretty much generated and told where we're going to spend it. The other majority of that 8% is for WTI and generates your workforce and all their dollars. So we don't have a lot of discretion on how we spend our money. So what it tells you is, we must use the money we get within the parameters and the focus that we receive it at and make sure we spend it efficiently and make sure the kids are getting proper education. And that's, I think, we do a phenomenal job of doing that, as you just saw in Patrick's presentation to you and attest the validity and the efficiency that we do operate under. We do a great job, and that is just the leadership of everyone up here, so. Here's your base student allocation, no changes to that from the previous time meeting we saw. It is going up thankfully. And our base funding is starting to trickle up, kind of not at the same steepness as the BSA, but at least it's going up. And then our, as we're going up in funding for base funding and base student allocation, you see our FTE count goes going down. And I don't know, this does worry me because I don't, I don't know if it's stopping and it's going to start going up. I mean, we hear everyone talking about, you know, Florida, our Duke energy not going to put the gas plant in, but how much is that going to generate? We don't know that yet. We do see permitting numbers are coming up, but we don't know what families, those are typically where we're seeing that permitting action happen, those are probably retirees coming out. So they're not going to generate the school kids. So I don't know how many school kids we're going to see generating up into the classrooms. And we're watching now the, the numbers in the schools. We have a couple of elementary schools on watch because their numbers are not coming in as what we had forecasted. So we're kind of watching those. Every day we're looking at the numbers, are you got them in? Kindergarten numbers, you know, those are always variable. We don't know when they're going to be there. I mean, it's still up to the first week of school, but we're seeing some of them that, you know, they're not hitting the mark by maybe 50, 70 kids, and that's a lot of kids. So we continue to watch that every day. Our strategic plan. And then all the fund classifications. And this is the consolidated sheet, and really no real changes from the previous ones, still the 210 billion. Not much of a difference at all. And this is biology, same thing. This is the sheet that we always love to look at, and we're still looking at coming in with a balanced budget with about a 4.3, approximately 4.4 million dollar unreserved fund balance at the end of next year. Remember, when we do the final budget, just, I know, I always remind you of this, that we take those reserves down there that are restricted for inventories and categoricals, et cetera, and they will roll up into the regular budget because we have to then put them into the budget. So it may look a little upside down at the end, but just know that it is budgeted because we've gotten that revenue in years past. So I always like to point that out and make sure you understand that. But I have to say, the last, this is probably the best budget in the last five years that we've seen, that we've put together and been able to have the funding to actually put out there into the schools and everything. And you can see where the fund balances are starting to level off. At some point in time, if we could start getting that to tick up into the north direction, that would be even better. And you can see, should be even funding for appropriations in the revenue coming in for next year. I give you all the information for the revenue descriptors. And like I said, when you look at your total revenue coming in, if you back out your capital transfer, your fund balances, essentially 92% of it comes from the FEFP. The other majority of it is coming from next door. There's a small, you got E-rate, you got, you know, interest, you got some small things coming in, but the majority of all our funding is essentially spoken for and told how to spend it. And I think that's what people don't really understand on the public note. We don't assess the required local effort, we don't assess that discretionary supplemental. We're told how to spend our money, and we make the best use of those dollars that we get to make sure that we're providing the education. And going through all the function descriptions, that gives you even more information on how those are classified. And look at how it's all appropriated. Not really any change from last time, it was pretty much the same, same totals and And then going by object. Once again, I always look at the total object, salaries are 65%, your benefits are 17, 82% essentially is personnel services, those are your classroom teachers, you know, your guidance counselors, your administrators, your bus drivers, I mean, your aides, I mean, that's, that is essentially the majority of your budget. And you can see how they're broken out here. 60% are in the classroom, that's for the salary dollars. You can see 60% in the classroom, another 70% of other certified personnel, your aides and other support. So the majority of your dollars are going back to the school, to the classrooms. Your benefits, it's kind of in thirds with your FRS, your social security and your health insurance is kind of the third, third, third on that. And then your professional services, insurance, repairs and maintenance, all the garbage, it's all right there, all broken up.
Like real garbage.
Solid waste.
You thought he was just doing a little side work on it.
And I still go back to, I always love this one because electricity, you know, is the biggest expense on the utility side. It's still, we've still helped, we still have managed that electricity to where we've accommodated for the increase in the, in the kilowatts, you know, the price per kilowatt, but we've managed it to where we haven't seen any increases. You know, I could say that we probably have seen all the savings we can see because we've been doing a great job for the last six years or whatever. We continue to, don't tell Mike.
Michael Bevins will be out there.
He's done a wonderful job, and I, he really does, so.
There's a lot that can be saved, he will find a way to do it.
Let me ask you about solar power.
Yes.
That's becoming much more popular in other states other than Florida. And people are getting very big rebates, and that it pays for them to have the solar panels. Is there nothing being done?
We've got three kind of, I don't know, test sites, prototypes, one at Citrus High, one at WTI, one at Citrus Springs Middle School, that they worked with, energy, and they put it in, they're managing it for five years, and then whatever we draw of those, we're pulling off the grid, so we're saving the electricity on those. So we're seeing how that works in that partnership with them right now. And then also, I know when they originally put it in the Citrus High, that was supposed to be part of their classroom too, the science classes would go out there and use those to do something.
Well, I think part of the problem is, and there was a big article in paper the other day that talked about power plants are no longer in the business of trying to conserve energy because it's not good for their bottom line, and they won't be building plants. And so now their amount of money that they're putting into conservation methods has dropped dramatically. So I'm not so sure they're a great partner. In other places, in other places, the power companies are becoming more of a great partner. But it's also cities and counties and states that are becoming partners with governmental entities. You know, in Colorado, my neighborhood, there's a lot of people that their electric bill is less than $30 because they're completely solar powered, completely run their entire house. It's amazing. And I see it, all the schools, all the bike, all the bike racks, they all have a cover and all the covers are all solar powered. Yeah, we're so far behind.
Well, one of the things though too, is the grants that they did. There was a huge grant, federal grant program that allowed for a lot of the solar, that really was a government offsetting of the cost of it because the payback was very, it was enormous to be able to get because by the time that it actually started paying back, it deteriorated. And that's what I was going to say, what is the, because what are we feeding back on the grid?
Well, it's not a lot. I mean, like the cafeteria, there's some, some of the classrooms at WTI, and I think like the gym and the cafeteria, maybe at Citrus Springs Middle School, it's not a lot, but I mean, every little bit helps certainly. And they were, you know, like I said, partnerships with Duke Energy and Duke Middle School.
Now, we used to have a program at WTI for solar, but workforce monies, there was no jobs for it.
Correct. That was, and you, if you don't have any jobs and you can't put them out there to place them to get your funding, so that was an issue. We have looked in the transportation world at compressed natural gas as far as operations of our bus fleets, where they claim there's an abundance of compressed natural gas that will last for, you know, hundreds of years. There's the County of Leon, City of Tallahassee and Leon County's School District all did a joint picture and went into do compressed natural gas. And those are some of the things that you can look at, maybe buy and lock in your fuel price for five years at $2 a gallon or something. It has some inherent problems, and I know Ms. Farmer, Mr. Gaskins have been reviewing and looking into some of these things. If you know, remember years ago, we tried propane, it was before my time, but I don't think it really worked that well. But this is supposed to be a better alternative where, you know, you can have fueling stations and you can actually set up a little enterprise fund and sell to the public. And I know that City of Cal, I think, just went that way. So they're, slowly but surely, they're doing that, but the conversion of your buses is very expensive, and then to start buying the buses that'll run them both, because what happens, you go on a field trip, you're way out of town, and there's no compressing, you know, you don't go to the BP and get compressed natural gas. So there's some inherent problems that we're having to look into, but, so we are looking at some alternative fuel sources like that.
But now, like, when we are making capital improvements like Citrus Springs Middle, where we've done the AC there, the HVAC, we've certainly seen either, both an improvement, well, the district. Improvement in not only the service, but also the energy efficiency of that.
Yeah, the AC unit, especially Forest Ridge here, we've seen tremendous savings on the efficiency of the chiller systems. Christopher High School, now that that's operational, we see that, see how it's running, it's done, done a very good job. So you're right, we do see more efficient use of our equipment that we're putting in. You know, it's just like everything else, if you put in a new AC unit in your home, it's going to have a higher CER rating and it's going to be more efficient. So we're getting those same positives with our new equipment as well.
Maybe when you have a chance, you could call the University of Florida because they have a section, it's solar energy, and we have contests every year, and this is for houses. But I bet I've been up there and I've looked at what they've done, and you might just call the department and ask, hey, is there some application for schools because they're right up the road, you know, to help us if they have something going in that area.
Materials and supplies, big ones is certainly is consumables, and your textbooks, those are the big expenses there. And your capital allocation. A lot of these are AB materials, computer, we don't have really, we're not buying motor vehicles anymore, but there are some parts and things like that for the cars, computer And then small one. Not much, there are substitutes in your big one. And then you go through projects to see where you're at by projects. Most of the things have come down, you can see some changes in some of the FEFP line items that supply these projects, but one of the things that I know we've talked about for the last handful of meetings is that list that we generated to the foundation. And we talked about, are we going to fund them, are we not going to fund them, is the foundation going to fund them? They are in this budget. Correspondingly, the revenues in the budget that we are seeking to receive from the foundation. And I bring that up to you because we're going to, remember, this is the tentative budget we'll do tonight, so we still have some, a month or so to, you know, to work through, flush through some of the issues that we still have. But we're going to have to find a way to fund some of those works. I think I heard from you last time, you still are interested in the SWIM program. I think there was a discussion on the grade level, but I, I won't get into where the grade level is going to land at, but I think that's where we've got to figure out some funding for that. And then also, the abd tutors, we're still working on some of that. So I tell you that it's in here, but also the corresponding revenues in here that we were seeking the foundation to come through on, and I know there's been some, they've made some determinations as to what they want to give and what they don't want to give to you, so. So these, they're in the projects here.
The PIM Foster, I thought we were looking at a different source.
As far as I know, they're still using PIM Foster.
Yes, actually, Mrs. Nobles is looking at a program called, oh gosh, Ed Options, and there is a better opportunity there for us, not as many credits. They are linked to Plato, so, and she's also in the process of talking with Smarmer Horizons. If you recall, that was that Renaissance, this smarmy one. So we're coming to a closure to that, she has a meeting with a vendor next week. So we are looking at other options that we'll provide. Now, I think, I don't know if she shared with you, is that the one option on the Ed Options is a Virginia diploma.
So we're going, so we'll just change the name instead of PIM Foster.
Correct. It's still, we're still looking at the title Six Rural Funds, that has traditionally been paying for that in years past.
Okay, thank you.
For the coming year. Typically, we're a creature of habit, we would keep that project, we would just make a new project and say-
And tell you.
Whatever the new one is.
Okay, thanks.
That's why we got five million projects.
Okay, so PIM Foster will be replaced by Virginia.
Whatever it may be. So no real issues. And we're still looking at some of these things. Some of these things may, we were reviewing even up to this morning, some of these projects, and we're, you know, going to go meet with the directors, make sure we completely see exactly what's in there and should, what should be in there, so. Instructional materials, I know Dr. Geddes has been working on going through and purchasing all the, or putting in POs to buy instructional materials for the school year, and I think they've done a pretty good job on using all the old carryover dollars, and now they're out actually on the $15 buying the materials. And the books that we did buy back in December at the reduced rate, actually, Lobo came through on the approved state list, so we-
Oh, good.
We did good on that purchase.
I remember that was-
Yeah. We took advantage, we took a chance on that cheap price for those textbooks. And just so you know, we are, we do have in the budget the $50,000 for the tax anticipation note. Don't know if we'll use it this year, we're analyzing, I know Ms. Wilson's doing some cash flow, and Ms. Russ some cash flow projections. I stuck it in here just to make sure, in case we need it, we'll look at that. Probably starting next month into September, trying to get it done, you know, kind of a little bit earlier than what we did last year, we kind of did a quick rush on that, but I don't want to be remiss and not plan on it if we need it. If we don't need it, then those dollars would just fall to the fund balance or fund a SWIM program or have it or something like that, so. And then we come through the, kind of the summary, the cost center budgets, pretty much most of this stuff is down. You'll see overall, it looks like it's up, but that's because a lot of the, a lot of the expenses have not been costed out to the schools, like a lot of them may- the expenses have not been costed out to the schools, like a lot of the maintenance stuff, and when they get costs out of schools during the year, they get budgeted out, you know, expensed out there, so. And that's the big one, maintenance. And then you see all the cost center, kinda detailed sheets that go through the budgets and everything. Y'all have any real questions on any of the stuff so far that presented, or? These really didn't change much from the previous time I showed them to you. Everything pretty much stayed the same.
Did we get to the, oh no, not yet.
Which one?
The one on the computer lease?
I'm sorry, what?
Computer lease, is that part of this, or is that in the?
Computer lease is done. That last payment was made in July, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess the question is that one.
That's a great question, and I mean, that's one that I've tossed around, because, you know, originally, we got into that whole, the idea was, we would refresh every three years, and we're good on technology, but what happened in between that? State came down and said, you gotta do one-to-ones. I think we've had those discussions, and Dr. Gettys correctly got wrong about resources for the one-to-one or resources for the staff computers, teacher computers, and I think what you had talked about was, these computers should last us, I mean, the technology is such that it would last us for a few more years.
Yeah, I feel like that the transition of one-to-one, we'll be able to accommodate some testing with our tablet purchases. I do think probably next year, a year from now, as we present our capital budget request, you'll be hearing about replacement computers for staff because they are getting dated notebook computers. And, but I don't see us purchasing student computers at this point in large numbers to the degree that we purchased them in the past.
So we're buying out the computers that we leased?
We've purchased, yeah, we've purchased that.
Right, we're just gonna keep them. So at the end of the day, if we hadn't leased them, if we had just bought them, would we have saved money or spent more money?
You would, there was a small interest on that, it was minimal, I can't remember exactly what it was. Essentially, what you would have done, you'd have to outlay all that cash, we paid over three years. The interest was, was minimal on that whole transaction.
But the lease was essentially buying them at the purchase price, just to buy it up, and then at the end, they get them back? Or we pay the final two thousand fifteen payment and keep them?
Yes.
So essentially, their value at the end of the day was seven hundred thousand dollars when we got done using them for three years.
That would be what they're gonna pay us, or not, we wouldn't pay that, we would essentially take that, but then you'd have to re-lease.
Okay, so we didn't pay that? Yeah, option purchase, one started to lease.
Let me get to where you're at. We just made that payment in June or July, right?
July.
July, yeah. That we actually, that was the last and final payment. One oh nine.
Well, that's okay, it's at the end, so don't skip by all that other stuff, we'll get there eventually. I didn't realize that we had a really, you know. I think I printed this from your new update, that's one.
Well, here, just, just while we're writing student enrollment, because I was mentioning that to you before, now, these are as of seven fourteen, but you can see like Citrus Springs Elementary, projections was seven eighty, this time they're at six ninety-one. That's about ninety kids short in projection. Now, we do know that there are probably some more kindergartners come in, but that's a lot smaller than what we had forecasted, so we've gotta watch that and see, okay. Right now, we have about three elementary schools, maybe one middle school that we're not filling a unit at right now because we've gotta manage that and monitor that to see whether they actually need it. Christopher Primary, fifty-five, five fifty-five to six oh seven, probably not too bad, they'll probably gain some more kindergartners, and we know, pre-K, even though they don't have it, they always have thirty in pre-K, so we always know they're gonna get the thirty, so we just plan on that. Hernan Elementary's not bad. Home Assassin, we gotta watch, I mean, they're two ninety-three compared to three fifty-three, we gotta watch that, but we do know that that pre-K number will come up, we know the kindergartners will come up, so they'll be roughly, I don't know, three twenty-five or so, so we gotta watch that and see what we're gonna do there. Emerys Primary is one that we're watching. La Canto Primary, they, they should be fine. Pleasant Grove, six seventy-eight to seven fifty-two, we do know they're getting more kindergartners, they'll get more pre-katers, but I don't know if they'll get up close to the seven fifty-two number, so we gotta watch that. Rock Crusher will get probably close, they got another twenty-eight pre-katers to put in there. The middle schools don't look bad, they've been, actually IMS, I looked at the number today, IMS has surpassed their forecast, they're almost up to a thousand kids. So naturally, you got one school, they'll have enough, we have to hold units, you got other schools going up, and they may just say, I need more units, so you gotta kinda, you gotta kinda manage the principals too and make sure that they understand, we want clean numbers, because a lot of times the rules haven't been cleaned up in the secondary, so you gotta kinda watch that. And you can see the high schools, Citrus High, they all look like they're up right now, but I guarantee you, there's probably some people that they gotta take out, so we'll clean those up, they will, and we'll get good numbers, so. So overall, we gotta watch our forecast, whether we're gonna hit those numbers. I don't know, for the last three or four years, we have just seen even further reductions of what we planned on for what the kids, I don't know where they're going. Your debt service fund, these are the funds that we use to pay your bond payment, your lease payments, et cetera. We got two more payments left at Christopher Primary School, I believe that'll be paid off next April, is that correct? And that bond will be done.
Wow.
Yeah. And then what we'll start, we'll start next year, we'll start a sinking fund for the high school, essentially, we'll take the principal payment and put it in an investment, we'll do an agreement with a bank or whatever, typically like a Citibank or whatever, and they'll agree to a forward delivery agreement is what we'll do, and we'll take those dollars, and they'll agree upfront for the next eleven years, they'll pay us so much interest on that money. So that interest, then, we can help offset our cost of the issuance. Remember, that whole deal was close to zero interest once we get down to the end of the day, it was the best deal going. We still get back our IRS subsidy of about a million dollars every, every payment, so it's been a great, great deal for us to build that school the way we did.
Isn't that arbitrage?
Only if you make more, I think our arbitrage rate was, can you think, over four point two five percent, four point three five percent, because that's when you're making more than what you should be making. We're not gonna hit that number, we're probably likely if we hit three and a half. So, but it's better than just sitting there making zero.
Absolutely.
So we'll probably enter to that in next January, February, getting ready, so when we start making our principal payments on the high school, that's where it'll go with the investment, the interest goes to the investors, when the bond matures, that's when they get all the principal. Okay, so your capital funds, Mr. Deutschman, here we go, so. Oh, just so you know, we found out yesterday, we finally found out, we're getting PICO maintenance, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, I think it was, somewhere around there. They just decided to tell us finally that we're, so it does not reflect in here, but we are getting some PICO maintenance dollars.
You got what, two million?
Oh, well, classroom for kids, PICO construction, PICO maintenance, I think there was years it was close to ten million dollars. There was a lot of.
And how much are we getting this year?
Three hundred thousand. But don't despair, that's the most we got in the last three years, yeah. So they just notified us, I think, yesterday, right? So here's your revenue sources, so you can probably see it easier on the other sheet. So we are planning on some interest income, impact fees, that's for your sewer plants, CO and D S, and then the county utility refunding, that's for the Citrus Springs Elementary School sewer. So we're working in concert with the, with the county in those two projects.
What are we gonna hear about the impact fee study?
I believe Chuck might be new Monday, but I don't know if he's, they're going in front of the county. The county, you know, is in a little bit of flux, so I don't know when they're actually going to meet with the county presented, but it's shortly because of.
The PDR board, they had a discussion a little bit about that, and then he's just kinda waiting on, kind of, when they report.
The Clark's office has been doing an audit on the impact fees, and so that's been, I think, also going, and I think that's been.
And just so you remember, when we put a project in, to get the funds, we had to actually submit information to the county, they have to approve the project is eligible for impact fees, we then pay for it, complete the project, and then seek reimbursement. So we just don't get, tell them, hey, give me a hundred thousand dollars, they have to approve the project, we put the cash out first, then we seek reimbursement, so it's a cost reimbursement, essentially is what it is. So it's not like we don't do something and they don't approve it, so. I think the auditor is going through, from what I understand, making sure their funds are being spent on approved projects and within that seven-year timeframe. So you can see all the various appropriations, and this really hasn't changed since we sent it, showed it to you last month. And if you roll out the five-year plan, essentially, at the end of five years, we're having a fund balance of about eight point seven million dollars. So you said the Dell lease, that was the final lease right there, Mr. Deutschman, the six ninety-three, five seventy-four, and that represented the fourth, I think there was three annual payments, and that was the fourth payment. If we elected to give the lease, turn the lease computers back in, we would not have paid that one, but what we would have had to do, then re-lease new computers at the, you know, million-dollar market year, or whatever it was.
It was two point four.
Two point four.
And Dr. Gettys, I don't know if you wanna respond to this, but you mentioned the student stations, you didn't think that we'd be increasing on that, because that represents about fifty-three hundred, that's the largest number, it, you don't have it on yours, but I, on, on the The teachers are about twelve hundred.
Correct.
There's still, I think, in the conversations, I know, being on, on the Technology Committee, that, you know, there's a, a big question mark as to, you know, what teachers are using, how they're gonna be using it, you know, how do tablets play into the predominant use that they've been using in the classroom for instruction, so all of that seems to be part of what drove the question of, of not moving forward, I think, with that, the next lease. And I say that just because I, I think it's a valid question, because I don't think it was an easy struggle, it was a lot of conversation on that. I know Mr. Clatter wanted, I mean, Mr. Vlakel wanted to get a good deal on lease, if we were going in that direction, he wanted to make sure we took that at the end. Well, or any of it, whatever the lease was, I think you were gonna, you were just ready to pounce on getting some, a good deal.
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, especially if we look at the iPads, the Apples, there was no real incentive, I mean, they, they threw out that they would buy back our old iPad twos, but they bought them back anyway, I mean, okay, the other three years, what are we gonna do, are you gonna buy these back if we lease them? Yeah, we buy them outright, we buy, yeah, so I mean, there is no real, and there is no real incentive to do, other than the cash, cash flow, if you're really having an issue with cash flow, so I really didn't, I didn't see the value in it right now, so. Because they're gonna give you the same trade-in as you do with the lease, as they do with the, with you buying them outright. So I think this is the sheet you were talking about, Mr. Kennedy.
Yeah, this was, that was it. That the, that the number of, of what Mr., Dr. Gettys was talking about would be the number of, if he does come with a capital, is a, a much smaller number than the total number of a, of a complete lease, replacement lease.
Yeah, I know, we've talked about other things, of the, the teaching unit being a multipurpose unit.
That's what we're saying, is it a, is it a tablet, is it a laptop they're needing, is it a, you know?
So here, the latitudes for the teachers, that's a laptop, twelve hundred sixty, so I'm assuming you're gonna equip teachers with all brand new laptops?
I don't think, let me come up there.
I think that's what I saw, IPS, it's a very lightweight black case, go charm it out.
Yeah, you know, I think there'll, there'll be discussion about what devices purchased for teachers, to be honest, right now, if we were to tell teachers, all you can have is a tablet computer, I think they would feel like their hands are tied, and they would be limited in their ability to create work and do, do the work we need to do, so there'll be some discussion about that, but I'm convinced that even if we do provide them some form of notebook computer, it's gonna be less, you know, less expensive for the, you know, the power and the features that we get, so we'll see, but, you know, I, I watch staff, those computers are functional, but they're large and bulky and slow and getting some age on it. No, they're Windows seven, they're Windows seven, but I, I can see today where they'll need an upgrade, if we continue to use them as we have, so.
The one that they added, I guess, was, was really nice.
Yeah, yeah. They actually do have a smaller, thinking of the Dell product, we chose that, but it's a smaller Dell notebook computer that's functional and fairly inexpensive, so.
Is there going to be, you know, right now, you've got Office two thousand and ten?
Correct.
And, of course, one of the big challenges is now Office has moved to the Office, you know, the cloud version, and, but the difference is, one was a purchase, one is a lease, and it really, if we do get into that, that's gonna be a recurring cost that we haven't typically had.
All the big software companies are going to this model now of software as a service, and so you have an annual recurring fee, very expensive, Microsoft's big with their Office three sixty-five, Adobe's big now with all their Creative Suite products, you know, they, the professionals that used to buy it are now having to pay an annual fee for it, kind of leases every year, so.
I've been standing in the business industry in the last couple of years, it's their way to say, oh, okay, now that we sold you this program, you're not, you're not buying a maintenance program that's too expensive, you can't buy it anymore without a maintenance program.
So we've tried to avoid that just because of that recurring cost, and what we have is functional, and to be honest, when that time comes, you know, if we all agree to it, there'll probably be some free or open source alternatives that we can use to create documents and spreadsheets and Word, you know, Open Office is one of the.
And it's interesting that Microsoft's done that because in Apple's version, they've, they've done the reverse.
Yeah.
Buy the hardware, we'll give you, you know, the software with it. So it's, it's, that's been, I think, an interesting piece that's been struggled with, so. Thank you, Dr. We've got about five minutes before we have a time certain.
Of course, you've all seen the capital projects going on, Mr. Burklo's jobs that are happening, the roof of Pleasant Grove, they are pretty much sized to fit and finished and doing some closeout punch-out work, that job is going very nicely, even though we had all the rains, the air conditioning units at Citrus Springs Middle School are on those. Has anyone been to see the gym at Christopher High School?
Yeah.
Please do, the floor looks beautiful, notwithstanding a little paint issue that I found out about this morning, but the electrical box is now out of there.
Finished, is it ready?
It's substantially complete by the end of this week, but if you get a chance to go by and look, it looks fantastic, so it really looks good. These are the Allen, your budgets for Allen, but I wanted to make sure you go through, special revenue, that's your food service, your Title I, your Title II is your IDEA. In this budget right now, there's only, I believe, the food service or the IDEA. A lot of your Title I's have not been approved yet, so they will get put in as they, as they get approved. In food service, Mr. Pasani continues to do great work over there, providing the nutrition, and he's able to, you know, fit the cafeterias with tables, and they, they're doing the Pleasant Grove remodel in the kitchen, I mean, they did some work at Citrus Springs Middle School, and all of this he's able to do, and he continues to run a, I mean, we try to make sure that he is spinning those funds down because they can only carry so much, because they start asking, what are you gonna do with that extra money? And we always say, we're reinvesting back in the schools, so. The internal service fund, that's our self-insurance health, that's our health insurance fund. We are looking very well, I kinda met with the Crown Group last week, went over some of this stuff, looking at some, we're a little early, but looking at, you know, renewal rates for January, and we're looking very good, so I was pleased to see the numbers that we're kinda forecasting for our next year's premiums. And of course, this is what we saw on the ledger. And of course, this is what we saw on the paper. This is what was in the paper on Saturday to meet the needs of trim. And essentially, it's just a consolidated.
And the only question I have from public was the debt service. I had a gentleman ask me about that and, and just the bond and the lease payments, all of it.
On lease, cop machines, bonds, yeah, two bonds. And here's our all the projects that we have to advertise for. If you, if you don't advertise for them, you can't spend the money on them. So now, for some reason, you get something in the middle of the year, you can go out and re-advertise again to be able to spend it. And this is the DR 420S that we received from the property appraiser. And then we fill in our portion and actually it'll be delivered tomorrow.
Board members, is there any quick questions before we go? Do I need to suspend or can I end this workshop? Okay?
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Blough.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, as well, she.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. I'm sorry. That's not intentional.
Final pledge will be September 9th, I think it is, at 5:30.
Board members, I'm gonna go ahead and then end this workshop. I'm going to open a public hearing on the tentative budget here at 5:30. And I will call the meeting to order. Purpose of this meeting is to adopt the tentative millage rate and the tentative budget for the Citrus County School Board for the 2014-2015 fiscal year. This is an advertised public hearing. Public notice of this hearing appeared in the Citrus County Chronicle on July 19th, 2014. The tentative millage rate for the required local effort is 5.0560 mills, which includes .0390 mills for prior period adjustment and is a decrease of 4.10% over the rollback rate. The tentative millage rate for discretionary is 2.2480 mills, which includes capital outlay. And the total tentative millage rate is 7.3040 mills and is a decrease of 4.05% over the rollback rate. The tentative budget totals, how do I always get this one? $210,841,579. Is there anyone here wishing to address the board as to the millage levy or any item within the budget? I'm gonna ask again, is there anyone here wishing to address the board as to the millage levy or any item on the budget? And for the last and third time, is there anyone here wishing to come on the millage levy and the budget? There's no one here? Is there a motion to adopt the tentative local required effort millage rate of 5.0560 millage, mills for operating purposes?
I move to adopt the tentative local required effort millage rate of 5.0560 mills for operating purposes.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Deutschman, to adopt the tentative local required effort millage rate of 5.0560 mills for operating budgets. I'm sorry, operating purposes. All those in favor?
Is there any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. There is. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry. I'm off my script. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Five, zero. Is there a motion to adopt tentative discretionary millage rate of .748 mills for operating purposes?
I move to adopt the tentative discretionary millage rate of .748 mills for operating purposes.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Balfour, on the motion to adopt the tentative local discretionary millage rate of .748 mills for operating purposes. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five, zero. Is there a motion to adopt the tentative millage rate of 1.500 mills for capital outlay purposes?
I move to adopt the tentative millage rate of 1.500 mills for capital outlay purposes.
A second question.
I have a motion by Ms. Deutschman, a second by Ms. Powers, to adopt the tentative millage rate of 1.500 mills for capital outlay purposes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five, zero. These millage rates represent a total millage rate of 7.3040 mills. Is there a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the tentative millage rate?
I make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the tentative millage rate.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the resolution to adopt the tentative millage rate.
Resolution of the Citrus County School Board adopting, adopting the tentative millage rates for fiscal year 2014-2015. Whereas the School Board of Citrus County, Florida, did pursuant to Chapters 201011 Florida statutes, approved tentative millage rates for the fiscal year July 1, 2014 to June 30th, 2015. And whereas at the public hearing and in full compliance with Chapter 200 Florida statutes, the School Board, Citrus County, adopted the tentative millage rates in the amounts of required local effort, tentative millage levy 5.0560, proposed amount to be raised 41,617,459. Basic discretionary tentative millage levy 0.7480, proposed amount to be raised 6,157,013. Capital outlay tentative millage levy 1.5000, proposed amount to be raised 12,346,952. The total millage rate to be levied is less than the rollback rate by 4.05%. Now therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Citrus County adopted, adopted each tentative millage rate for the fiscal year July 1, 2014 to June 30th, 2015, on July 22nd, 2014, by separate vote prior to adopting the tentative budget.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five, zero. Is there a motion to adopt the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2014-2015 fiscal year in the amount of $210,841,579?
I move to adopt the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2014-15 fiscal year in the amount of $210,841,579.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Ms. Balfour, to adopt the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2014-2015 fiscal year in the amount of $210,841,579. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five, zero. Is there a motion to approve the resolution adopting the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2014-2015 fiscal year?
I move to approve the resolution adopting the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2014-2015 fiscal year.
A second.
I have a motion by Ms. Deutschman, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the resolution adopting the tentative budget of the Citrus County School Board for the 2014-2015 fiscal year.
A resolution of the Citrus County School Board adopting the tentative budget for fiscal year 2014-2015. Whereas the School Board of Citrus County, Florida, did pursuant to Chapters 201011 Florida statutes, approved tentative millage rates and, and a tentative budget for fiscal year July 1, 2014 to June 30th, 2015. And whereas the School Board of Citrus County set forth the appropriations and revenue estimates for the budget for fiscal year 2014-2015. And whereas at the public hearing and in full compliance with Chapter 200 Florida statutes, the School Board of Citrus County adopted the tentative millage rates and the budget in the amount of $210,841,579 for fiscal year 2014-2015. Now therefore, be it resolved that the attached budget of the School Board of Citrus County, including the millage rates that's set forth therein, is hereby adopted by the School Board of Citrus County as a tentative budget for the categories indicated for fiscal year July 1, 2014 to June 30th, 2015.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five, zero. Is there a motion to adopt the tentative budget as the current operating budget until the final budget is adopted?
I move to adopt the tentative budget as the current operating budget until the final budget is adopted. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Deutschman, to approve the tentative budget as the current operating budget until the final budget is adopted. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five, zero. A final budget hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, September 9th, 2014, at 5:30 PM at the Citrus County School Board District Service Center located at 1007 West Main Street on State Road 44, Inverness, Florida. We're adjourned.
Thank you.